Good morning and welcome to the 2020 Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Steve Rozansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. Our role as a chamber is to be a catalyst, convener, and champion for the Newport Beach business community. Hosting today's forum fulfills all of these roles. This is the first candidate forum of the election cycle, and I'm excited to see the candidates in action. Some are familiar faces, and some are newer to local politics. Being the first candidate forum, we tend to get the unvarnished and unrehearsed answers to questions concerning current issues of concern to Newport Beach residents and business owners. Over 200 people have registered to hear what the candidates have to say this morning. I would be remiss if I didn't thank First Republic Bank for sponsoring our Wake Up Newport series and this candidate forum. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce the moderator for today's program, President of the Orange County Business Council, Lucy Dunn. Lucy has a long biography, which I'll dispense with, but needless to say, she is one of the most respected leaders in the Orange County business community, and probably in the state as well. Thank you, Lucy, for agreeing to be with us this morning, and now I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. This is always one of my most favorite events during an election season that I don't think there's been anything quite as crazy as this one. So it's great to be in Newport Beach. I picked a virtual background just for you all today because my heart is in Newport Beach, and I'm delighted to join you. So my role is to kind of go over a little bit of the ground rules first, not just for our candidates who know, but also for the audience, so they can expect, to know what to expect on this little journey for this morning. The candidate forum is going to consist of three distinct parts. Part one is I'm going to ask each candidate to give us a two-minute opening statement as to why he or she is running for city council. Part two, I'm going to ask a series of questions, and the candidates are going to be allowed one minute, tough, but one minute, to answer, and listen carefully to each question when asked. Some of them have multiple parts. Thank you, Steve. Each candidate will answer the current question before the next question then is read, and the order of answering will begin in the order of council districts two, then five. Next question will be answered in the order of district five, then two, and so on. The candidates in each district will alternate in going first in answering the questions, and I'll continue to ask questions until approximately 9:55 or so. So that was part two, and then last, part three. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute closing statement. The closing statements will be given in the reverse order as the opening statements, and after all candidates have made their closing statements, the candidate forum will end. If there's any decisions to be made in this virtual forum today, your moderator will be conclusive as far as making any decisions, and I have strong control over the mute button. So do watch for the timing of all of your statements and be respectful for each other. There is one person doing timing. Is that you, Robin? I see you there. Awesome. So keep an eye on Robin, who's working on the timer for the two-minute opening statements, the one-minute response questions, and the one-minute closing statements. The timer will begin timing when it is indicated for the candidate to begin. So just wait for her to give you the high sign. Robin is going to hold up a yellow card. You want to show us what it looks like? There you go. Hold it up a little bit higher and closer to the camera, Robin. So there you go. So everybody can see, you've got 15 seconds remaining. When the time has elapsed, she'll ring a bell indicating that the candidate should stop talking. That's a little more kind than me just hitting your mute button. Finish up your sentence. The candidate is not required to use the entire allotted time for response, and if you conclude your response before time is up, I'll move on to the next candidate. Each candidate is expected to behave in a civil manner towards his or her opponent and the other candidates. It's so odd that we have to say that, right? But we need to say that. Please do not interrupt each other's responses. Please do not interrupt. And at the end of the forum, there will be some short concluding remarks by our fearless leader. Mr. Rozansky, all candidates should please remain on the webinar until our concluding remarks have been completed. All good? Got that? Pretty easy, right? An awesome, an awesome forum as usual. All right, so let's begin with our opening statements. And we're going to start with Brad Avery. Brad?
Thank you, Lucy.
The timer is yours.
Oh, go ahead and start.
There you go.
Good to go first. Newport Beach is a special place. I've known that from the day I graduated from Newport Harbor High School. I knew it during my three decades as Director of Orange Hills College's Nonprofit Marine Program. My five years on the city's harbor commission introduced me to the unique needs of Newport Harbor and taught me how the city worked. My volunteer work on the Board of Governors of Sherman Gardens and Library has shown me the drool of Corona del Mar. Joining the Board of Advocates at Oasis Senior Center opened my eyes to how a great city and active seniors can add to the quality of life for so many. My community service prepared me for my time on city council, and I am grateful for the three years of experience before 2020 exploded. Now I am asking for another term to help guide us through this pandemic. Like everyone, I look forward to the recovery, but I keep my expectations in check. So when we recover, and we will recover, it will happen faster and easier if we are all kind and look out for each other. Today, your council is working well and is implementing solutions to help weather this storm. This would not be possible without the efforts of our residents, volunteers, businesses, city management, and staff, and we are so proud of our police, fire personnel, and lifeguards. They have protected us during one of the most stressful periods in our city's and nation's history. The council and city hall exist to meet the needs and demands of residents, businesses, and visitors. I enjoy contributing to this engaging process, and I strive to listen, learn, and make the right votes that reflect good policy and the will of the majority. I am committed to protecting property values and property rights. We must continue to support small businesses. We must be vigilant against airport noise and pollution, maintain clear, clean waterways, and reduce traffic congestion. I will continue to push to minimize the state's misguided housing policies that could result in major density increases, and I'm heartened by this year's successes of our homeless program. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Nancy. Nancy Scarborough.
Hi. My name's Nancy Scarborough. Some of you know me, many of you don't. I'm looking forward to introducing myself to you all through these forums from now till November. There seem to be quite a few of them coming up. I also hope to have an opportunity to talk to many of you in more depth by phone or email or Zoom. Speaking for three or four minutes at a time is a difficult way to have an understanding, but I'll try. So I've owned my own small business for 35 years. My company designs and manages the construction of corporate and medical offices, and we exist because of change. Without change, I wouldn't have a business. I'm running for city council because I've seen the need for active participation and independent decision-making, which I feel has been lacking. I think I'm well-suited for the position because of my involvement in many, many city activities. I've attended most of the city council meetings for the past several years, many of the planning commission meetings I've participated in, or attended meetings from numerous study sessions, city committees, community groups, and other activities that were city functions. I have a pretty good understanding of the issues, including the general plan, housing, RENA, ADUs, STLs, the homeless issues, various airport issues, school district issues, as well as some things going on in the county and other areas of Southern California, the coastal commission. I am a really strong advocate for community involvement. I believe that our involvement is critical to the success of our city, and effective government doesn't happen in a vacuum. I'm honored to, I would be honored to represent you on the city council. I hope you'll have time to visit my website, nancyfornewport.com, for more information and to sign up for my newsletter. Also, my phone number and email address are available at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Noah Blom. Welcome. Go right ahead.
Hello, Lucy. Good morning, Newport. How are we today? So some of you know me from the restaurants and stopping in. I am not a politician, which I think we've covered fairly well in the opening statements here. The reason I'm running for city council is because I love Newport so much. I grew up here. It's been my home. I got an opportunity to leave Newport and see just the beautiful world and really miss what this community offers. Right now is a time where we're in a lot of transition, and we need new leadership to see us through that transition. The old guard did a great job keeping up with the challenges that Newport's faced. We haven't always agreed on every decision, but that's great. That's part of the group of community, and we want to see that moving forward. But right now, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and we need some dynamic thought and some new people that are really going to get their hands dirty and get into the gusto of this. Otherwise, the small businesses aren't going to thrive. They're not going to grow. We need to put these positions in now while we still have the chance. Newport's done such a great job through this pandemic. We've done such a great job with great leadership up and down the city council, and I give thumbs up to everyone there right now, including my opponent. I think we have such a strong community, and I only want to see it get stronger. As we move forward every day, I want to take the assets I've learned in business and opening and meeting the public every day, 300 or so of them, and hearing the words from every type of person, every type of Newporter, and I want to bring them together. And in bringing them together, I want to see us gain a strength that we just didn't have before. And so that's why I'm running for city council. That's why I have no political experience, only business. Feel free to come and visit me anytime. I would love to chat.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you very much. Next up, welcome, Jeff Hurdman.
Morning, Lucy. Morning, excuse me, morning, Newport. Pleasure to be here this morning and participate in this first forum. I want to start off by saying I'm a 66-year resident of this great city. As a current council member, I work hard, sometimes seven days a week, at helping to solve some of our city's most difficult problems. Problems like the homeless, quality of life issues related to John Wayne Airport, supporting businesses during this COVID crisis, making difficult decisions and trying to protect our citizens from this virus, state-required housing issues. And then there's always the issue of maintaining services that all of Newport expects despite the economic effect that this pandemic is having and will have on our city. All very, very challenging times. And because that now really is not the time for change on our council's stability and especially experience is what is needed. Council members who understand and know exactly what's going on in terms of the complexity of all of the issues facing our city. For the past four years, serving on the Newport Beach City Council has been an absolute honor. I hope to continue to serve the people of District Five as well as constituents throughout the entire city with integrity, transparency, and a very hard work ethic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And next up, running unopposed, to remind our viewers, for District Seven is Mayor Will O'Neill. And because he's running unimposed, he will just be sharing with us his two-minute opening statement, and we will not subject him to questions in round two. So welcome, Mayor. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Lucy, for moderating this debate, and thank you to the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce for hosting. It would, of course, be an understatement to say that this year hasn't gone the way I expected when I became mayor. It hasn't gone the way any of us expected, as parents, as neighbors, as friends, as employers, as employees. I believe that when this year started, that the most difficult and pressing issue would be housing mandates from the state, which are still pressing and still difficult and will no doubt be discussed today. But clearly, COVID and its associated effects, both from a health and economic perspective, dominate. I appreciate the chamber's support during this period, which we've repaid with our very own early adoption of outdoor retail and dining, and of course, creating a program for Disversing Care Act funds that exceed $2 million at this point. We still have a long way to go, but yesterday, there was a glimmer of hope. Yesterday was the county's first day where all metrics were under the state's watch-list standard. And look, it's still the year of the volunteer, which is, of course, taking a different perspective this year, but it carries the same meaning. Please continue to wake up each day asking how you can help someone else. We are a stronger community when you do. I encourage people watching this to follow me on Facebook and Instagram for quick daily updates. I've got thousands of people doing so now. I'd love for you to join us. And look, I am unopposed, but I'm still going to ask for your vote. It means a lot. So with that, as Lucy said, I'm going to cede the rest of my time on this debate, and I'm not so sad to be doing that. So if you'd like to reach out to me anytime, please do, but again, I appreciate your vote in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate your time this morning, and thank you for sharing your comments. All right, we're moving right along into now part two. And again, reminding, we have questions, a series of questions here. We'll mix up the order. And one-minute responses. So do kind of keep an eye on Robin. All right, first question. Over the years, traffic and the airport have been the two of the most important issues of concern to Newport Beach residents. Please pick one or the other, one or the other, and tell us how you would approach the issue. And we'll begin with Brad.
Thank you, Lucy. I'll take traffic. And you know, the traffic issue will never go away in Newport, so it is a matter really of managing it, of listening to residents, and trying to parse between what our traffic division needs to see and what residents really want, what traffic engineers want to see, which is generally to move traffic along with wider lanes, less stops. But residents, in my view, tend to want to see traffic move slower with fewer lanes, particularly through Coast Highway. In Corona del Mar, we see that going on. No one's advocating for an extra lane in Corona del Mar. And along Coast Highway near my district, I am completely supportive of keeping traffic to the existing number of lanes on Coast Highway. No increase in the volume of traffic in terms of lanes. Thank you.
Very good. Nancy, traffic or airport? You'll have to unmute.
Sorry. I was going to talk about the airport, but I think I'll address traffic. Traffic is being reviewed differently these days. Instead of the old traffic patterns being reviewed for EIRs and development, they're reviewing it based on vehicle miles traveled, which is going to change the formula for how we deal with our traffic problems. We have traffic problems that are traffic speed as well as just too many cars on streets that are narrow, one-way streets. Corona del Mar is affected by that. My neighborhood is not so much. As far as Pacific Coast Highway is concerned, I think that even in the candidate forums two years ago, every candidate was in agreement that no one wanted to expand Pacific Coast Highway. It adds to the charm of Corona del Mar. It allows cars to go through those areas more slowly and stop and look and go to visit restaurants that they can see, see the retail. However, a month ago, the council majority voted on something that they were unaware of, and they voted to actually increase the number of lanes to three lanes on PCH at Newport Boulevard. This is something that has-
Finish your sentence, Nancy, because your time is up. I don't know if you heard the bell.
No, I didn't. Sorry.
Yeah, kind of keep an eye on Robin's box. So finish your sentence, last sentence.
That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, Lucy. Is the bell not, or you cannot-
Not quite loud enough. You might make it a little bit more. I should have made the practice. Thanks, Robin. Okay, Noah, airport or traffic? Unmute yourself. There you go.
Unmute. Perfect. All right, Lucy. Well, everyone is trying to avoid the airport. That's okay. Let's talk about the airport. So the airport started getting a lot worse in 2017 when the FAA made some new regulations, changed some patterns, and Newport tried to react fairly quickly, and we liked that. You know, in 2018, we launched a lawsuit. We went to sue. We've adjusted some of those patterns, but there's still a lot of work to be done at the airport. You know, we have some good players, some good neighbors in Southwest, but we need to get the other airlines to the table. And this is a huge concern for everyone in my district, from Valvoline and Newport as a whole. Our focus right now has to be the business sense of making these airlines become good players and good neighbors in our environment. So we got to put a lot of focus on that airport right now and really adjust those takeoff patterns, really disperse across the game, and make that the new focus of what that board has been doing now for these last four years. Really put the angle on that airport.
Thanks, Noah. Very good. Jeff Hurdman. Jeff?
Airport, obviously. Four years ago, when I got elected to city council, I became Chair of the Aviation Committee, and I have lived and breathed it for the last four years. It's been, I consider to be my absolute top priority. One of the reasons being I live right underneath the flight path, takeoff flight paths. So my quality of life, my wife's quality of life is definitely affected by the airport. I'm really proud of the work that the community and I and staff have accomplished in the area of the airport. We still have much work to do, but we've kind of reached a critical juncture right now in terms of our talks with the airlines, with chief pilots, with the FAA, and with the board of supervisors. We're right in the thick of it right now in terms of the General Aviation Improvement Program and hammering out the conditions of the lease for the new general aviation facilities that will exist at John Wayne Airport. We've begun talks with the FAA on flight takeoff patterns. We are also working closely with the airlines, thanks to the Airport Working Group, a community group in our city. We have completely repurposed and reorganized the Aviation Committee within our city so that they're, not to say that it wasn't before, but that they're doing meaningful work, making recommendations to the council.
Thank you, Jeff. Your time is up. Robin, hit that bell. Let's hear it.
I can't hear it. I didn't hear it, but that's all right. Thank you.
Can you hear it?
Nope. Can't get it yet. That's okay.
Why don't I just say-
I can't go like that.
Why don't I just say "time" with my voice, the old-fashioned way?
The old-fashioned way. Great. Thank you, Robin. And thank you, Jeff.
I will be showing the sign as well.
Keep an eye on the sign, right. All right, question two. Newport Beach City Council has taken several actions in response to COVID-19 and the pandemic, including closure of city hall, parks, beaches, and other public facilities. They have also provided assistance to business owners through the use of temporary use permits, moving operations outdoors, and through two grant programs to small business owners. Costa Mesa and the city of Irvine have passed ordinances requiring face coverings. Do you support action by the city to require and enforce the wearing of face masks in public areas and in retail and office environments when social distancing is not possible? And, the two-parter, what other actions might you recommend the city take that they aren't currently doing? Got all that? Right? First up, Jeff.
Okay, I'm just writing down. Okay, thank you. I'm pleased with the action that we've taken as a city council over the past several months to protect our citizens from the spread of this virus. As far as mandating masks, I have a personal opinion about this. What I'd like to see happening is that everyone take personal responsibility for making sure that they're not contributing to the spread of this virus while at the same time protecting themselves. Unfortunately, that doesn't seem to have caught on until recently. I'm seeing more and more people wearing masks. With the decline in the number of people who are contracting the disease and with voluntary compliance with wearing masks, I'm not real sure at this point.
Thank you. We got your time now, Jeff. All right, moving on, Noah. Question again, face coverings and enforcement and other actions you might recommend the city take that they currently aren't doing?
Leave me alone. Perfect. So this is near and dear to my heart as we have both restaurants in Costa Mesa and Newport, and we really feel the effects of mandating fear versus common sense. I think whenever we force the public to do something, we're taking a little bit of the freedom out of the public. And we've seen Newport be a bastion for, one, great numbers. We have an amazing partner in HOG, and it's important for us to remember, we're not a healthcare agency. We get to divert those questions to the county. We get to listen to the recommendations from the state, and we get to do our best to make the judgments for our citizens. What we can do, we can make sure we keep our beaches open, where the air is beautiful and fresh. We can make sure that people have that space they need and that spread that's wonderful. And we can support them in the business and the recovery that is going to need to happen. And that's how we're going to beat this thing in the end, because it's the economic damage that we have to look to repair after this is behind us.
Thank you, Noah. Nancy? Off of mute?
I'll get this. After about four or five questions, we'll be done, but-
You can probably leave yourself on, you know, unless you've got a lawnmower in the background, probably be better.
Construction outside the door, so.
Okay.
So those are all very good points. And I have to say that I wouldn't really favor mandating masks, although I think it is a responsibility of individuals, and I certainly would not want to be a person who would cause someone else harm. So I think that it is a personal responsibility, and I would hope that everyone in the community would consider the health of other people. We don't know what their underlying problems are when we're walking past people in the store or in a restaurant. Clearly, when you're eating at a restaurant, that's not possible, but in and out, going to the restrooms, I think that those are reasonable expectations. I agree that we need to keep parks open. I'd like to see school grounds available for recreation, trails open. We need to be outdoors as much as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Brad?
Thank you. Yeah, I am not in favor of mandating, the city mandating face masks. And as you've heard before, we've got the state mandating it. We've got the county mandating it. We have a great partner in HOG. They're giving, obviously, instructions to our residents and pushing out information on this pandemic. And of course, everyone really should wear a face mask, and I respect the right of businesses to refuse service to anyone not wearing a face mask. We should definitely support that. But I would like to see when we open up a little more, which I think will be coming based on what's happening in our county, that code enforcement is more active, not to punish businesses, but to go and when they see too much going on, too much crowding, too many people sitting close together, we need to not fine, but go in and say to the operator, please help us out and redistribute your tables, disperse crowds. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right, we're on to question number three here. Currently, there are over 1,500 short-term lodging permits issued in the city. Recently, the council took up the matter of short-term lodging permits and enacted a broad ordinance regulating short-term rentals. There's also talk of further regulations capping the number of short-term lodging- There's also talk of further regulations capping the number of short-term lodging permits and requiring a minimum six-day rental. Where do you stand on these two key points? And do you think short-term rental business needs more or less regulation? Brad, we're starting with you this time.
Thank you. You know, our residents have really, in some cases, put up with quite a bit with short-term rentals. But on the other hand, short-term rentals have been a part of our city's fabric for 100 years, from the time there were tents on the beach. So, I get both sides of this, and I have, I've had my own issues where I live with noise, and it's very difficult. And the police have many more important things to do than try to respond to noise complaints. So, I'm in favor of a three-day minimum on short-term rentals. I'm in favor, particularly, I would like to see more code enforcement. So, we should take some of that $4 million revenue that we get from short-term rentals and invest it in some additional code enforcement, so we can do more to protect our residents and to educate our visitors, who are very important to our economy, on what we expect of them when they're doing a short-term rental at the beach, and there to have fun, which they should have. But it's this balance we need to strike, and we, I think it starts with a little more code enforcement done in a way that is, is customer-friendly. And that's really what we do in Newport Beach, and I think we do a great job with our police and our code enforcement. Thank you.
Nancy?
Thank you. I do support the regulations that have been put in place. I think that Newport Beach has more than twice the number of short-term lodging permits than any other coastal city, and we definitely take our share of that. The problem to me seems to be a lot of operators are not communicating with their renters clearly. And if people who were here for a weekend today, three days, five days, treated those homes as if they lived next door to the guy next door, if they were a long-term neighbor, we wouldn't have a problem. It's, it's just a matter of common sense. And the operators should communicate clearly with their renters that they are expected to be civil, take care of trash, noise, not have loud parties, curfews. Parking is a big problem. I am in favor of some, some additional balanced requirements.
Thank you, Nancy. Noah?
Thank you, Lucy. Short-term rentals. Well, we just passed new rules on those, so I think, before we try to pass more rules, let's see if a little bit of regulation and enforcement works. I think always adding more rules on top makes it difficult, and this has been part of the fabric of our community since I was a boy here. My brother-in-law grew up in Arizona, met my sister here. My sisters, who now live in other cities, come back every year and stay in places all throughout Newport. Part of our fabric and part of who we are is this community visiting our villages, making them something special. The fact that Balboa Island is famous because of this is part of the great fabric of Newport. And so, to get rid of it, it just seems insane. We want to support those, and always we want better players in everything we do. So, let's see how the current rules are working with a little bit of engagement.
Very good. Thank you. Noah, Jeff?
Yes, thanks, Lucy. I, 18 months ago, was one of three council members appointed to the ad hoc committee to deal with short-term lodging. The reason for this came about as a result of years of community complaints about short-term lodging units within our city. The council was pretty much forced to address this issue. The two things that you asked about, capping permits and minimum night stay, really are not decisions that our council will be making. These are two issues that have to go up to coastal commission. Coastal commission has to answer the question as to whether or not we can cap the number of permits we issue, and whether or not we can establish a minimum night stay. If we can on both of those, then we'll come back to the city, then we'll come back to council, and we'll be asking for approval of a recommendation for three nights minimum stay and 1,550, a 1,550 cap on the number of STL permits that are issued within our city. This is all being done to protect quality of life issues for people that live in our city and live next door to STL units. And it's also being done in order to allow this industry to continue operating within our city. No one is suggesting that it be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, very good. Next question now, question four. Over the last several months, there have been nationwide protests, including in Newport Beach, over racial inequity, inequality, and especially on how police departments deal with minorities. Many have called for defunding, or perhaps more accurately, reallocating funds received by police departments towards other programs to help minorities or provide better training. How would you answer calls to quote "defund the police" unquote here in Newport Beach? Jeff, we start with you.
I flat-out do not agree with any action, any movement to defund police. I mean, after all, when you're in trouble, who's the first individual, or what's the first entity you call? It's our police. When you take a look at the amount of funding, if you take a look at our general fund that we are devoting to and putting into programs to help people like homeless in our city, we're doing an exceptional job. But to answer the question specifically, no, I absolutely do not support the defunding of police.
Thank you, Jeff. Noah?
No. I think the Newport Beach police are some of the most amazing people, and most of our community feels 100% with them. Our crime averages have gone down, especially compared to surrounding cities. You know, we see 8 million-plus visitors a year, and our police do a phenomenal job making sure that this is still a wonderful and safer place to live. Defunding, no. Let's, let's find them funds. Let's continue to help our police works be educated, trained, and equipped. That's what we're looking for. It's not about taking away education and training. It's about giving the education and training to make this safer, better, and more beautiful of a community. I got to speak to the police, and they said it's one of the few places where they come, where they get waved at all the time. And I think that's just an amazing message of our community. When our citizens love to wave at our own police, give them a thumbs up and say, "We support you." That's what we do as well.
Thank you, Noah. Nancy?
Hi. Excuse the background noise, there's a big truck right out my window. So, I have to say that I agree with Jeff. I absolutely would not defund the police department. I think they're doing a great job. I've witnessed them deal with situations with ease and finesse, and I think that they are, they handle themselves very well. I don't really think that we have a big problem here. We do have a lot of visitors to this city, and in years past, 4th of July weekend has just been completely out of control. They have managed to, through education and communication with neighbors on the peninsula and other areas that are impacted, manage to reduce that level over the years. And I think that that is a big asset. I would not change any funding for the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And Brad?
Yeah, we've been through one of the most stressful times ever in this city this past half-year, with the closing of beaches, the protests. And all of us are feeling the stress of it, businesses are, our visitors are. And yet, we've gone through this period, I cannot recall any incident where the Newport Beach police had some kind of enforcement issue that reflected badly on them. To the contrary, they've been absolutely professional. And I was out on the beach on, on the night of our high tide incident, and they were amazing, along with our other public safety, fire, and lifeguards. We've just got an exceptional team, and that's one of the things you realize when you're on council and involved with the city, is, and as others have spoken just by their own experience, we've got a great department. I totally agree, there are other departments that need reform seriously, but we're not one of them, that's for sure. Thank you.
Very good. Question five. One of the economic drivers of the city of Newport Beach is the harbor. Significant resources have been expended on dredging, seawall replacement, and raising the height of seawalls, new public docks, and other harbor improvements. On the ballot this fall will be a charter amendment to make the harbor commission a permanent body, similar to the planning commission. Let us know if you are for or against the charter amendment, and whether future planned expenditures on the harbor should be paid for out of the city general fund, or should part or all of the burden be carried by dock owners, boat charter operations, other commercial users of the harbor, et cetera. We begin here with Brad.
Well, thank you, Lucy. As a co-author of Measure Z, of course, I'm in favor of this measure coming up on the ballot. And it needs to codify in our charter, the harbor commission, and that helps guarantee stewardship of the harbor going forward, regardless of changes on council. And this is critical, because the harbor generates hundreds of millions of dollars a year for businesses that result in tax revenue for the city. And it has tremendous needs that aren't readily apparent to the casual observer, but we must maintain it all the way along from dredging to seawalls. There's a tremendous amount of work ahead of us, and we can't let it deteriorate. So, we need to support our new fledgling harbor department and make harbor a welcoming place for visitors, but also protect our 1,200 residents on the waterfront from excessive noise of speeding boats and the things that come with success.
Thank you, Brad.
Need to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi. I am not in favor of this particular ballot measure. I am in favor of a ballot measure. I believe the harbor commission should be chartered, a part of the city charter. I think this particular measure was put together hastily. There was no committee citizen review, no input, no discussion with residents about this. I fully agree that the money spent on the harbor is appropriate, and we should continue to fund those things, such as dredging and dock repairs and pier repair. Those are being handled now without it being a part of the city charter, and I think that that should continue. As far as the, who pays for the work, I think that's shared. I do think that the city should foot some of that bill. We have a lot of tourists who are down here taking advantage of our harbor, and that is not a cost that should be passed on to the people who own docks and have boats in the harbor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Noah?
So, as far as Measure Z goes, I think that Duffy Avery and Will did an amazing job sculpting something to really put this $200 million-plus jewel of our city front and foremost, to make sure we're taking care of it in every possible way. The funding of the harbor, yeah, you know, we should use some of our money from the general fund, but this is part of California. We should use the state as well. We should divert some of those funds that have always been dedicated to Long Beach and LA and see what we can't get them to do. In business, we look for money everywhere. That's the goal. And I think Newport can also look for money in other places. We have to protect our harbor at all costs. We have to continuously improve it and make sure it stays the jewel that it is supposed to be in this purpose.
Thank you, Noah. Jeff?
Yeah. As far as Measure Z is concerned, absolutely, I support the charter amendment. Let's face it, our harbor is our city's biggest asset, and, and certainly warrants continual investment and continual improvement. One thing you didn't mention was water quality. Water quality is absolutely critical in terms of the use of our harbor. I've been chair of the Tideland's Water Quality Committee now for the last four years. A lot of projects that are completed in the harbor are done through funds like the Enterprise Funds, Tideland's Fund. You'd be amazed at the amount of grants that we apply for and receive for projects within our harbor, developer fees, and yes, general fund monies as well. All those funds and sources of money should continue to be tapped, researched, and taken advantage of for projects in the harbor. One other project, too, that we have to do.
Jeff, sorry, hold on that, save that one for your closing comments, for your one other project. Time is up. All right, next question. We've got a lot of more questions, and our time is, I'm watching our time very, very closely here. Okay, this one's a multi-parter, so pay attention. I'll, I'll, I'll start here with, "The city council approved a budget for 2021 that had an approximate $30 million shortfall due to projected declines in revenue, particularly from a drop in bed tax and sales tax revenues. Through a patchwork of reallocations, debt, and a small dip into general fund reserves, the city was able to balance the budget this year. If we are slow to rebound economically next year, where would you anticipate cuts in city services? Capital improvement projects to be made? Sacred cows in the budget that you wouldn't touch at any costs? And, last but not least, some cities that you never would think would be raising sales taxes in Orange County are planning sales taxes this year. Would you raise taxes in Newport Beach to cover a tough budget?" We're going to start with Jeff.
$30 million shortfall, $33 million shortfall is what is anticipated. Way we're approaching this at this point is just primarily postponed capital improvement projects. That's, that's our main vehicle for addressing this, while at the same time maintaining services that the people of Newport Beach have come to expect from, from our city. That's, that's critically important. Raising taxes, absolutely not. I'm not in favor of raising taxes. We have a very healthy reserve in this city, and that's what you have a reserve for. When you're, when you face times like this, you tap into your reserves. I'm hoping we won't have to do that through capital improvement projects, savings, or postponement.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Noah?
Start with raising taxes, absolutely not. Not in favor of adding any more burden onto the residents of the city to pay. Newport has done a great job of managing the budget. Now, we've talked extensively about this, but by being conservative on both sides of the coin, and what we spend and what we anticipate, we've been able to, to get really, really close in an era where most cities are seeing huge shortfalls. I think those type of fiscal concerns are what's going to drive us forward. You know, we, if we have to cut more funds, then we can do deferrals of non-core infrastructure projects. You know, we have a lot on our slate, things we're looking forward to do, but we can defer slightly. But the city's going to rebound well if we put our focus in making money, not in just spending.
Thank you, Noah. Nancy?
Thank you. I am not in favor of raising sales tax. I think that that is a burden on an already stressed economy. I think that the shortfalls can be addressed with reduction of capital improvements for the time being. It doesn't seem that we're that far off. We do have reserves. We have increases in revenue from property tax. Even during COVID, the property tax coming into the city is rising, so I don't see that as being an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Brad?
Yeah, so, the finance committee just did an incredible job, I think, of finding places in the budget with non-core infrastructure, with hiring freeze, and some of the other items you alluded to, to arrive at $30 or $33 million in cuts and not have citizens facing any shortfall in services. And that's a wonderful position to be in. Not many cities are in that position. But to your point, going forward, if the pandemic continues strong and we're back on our heels in the spring, we will have to look at some real serious decisions. It won't be as easy as it has been this time. And so, that will take some leadership, it'll take the community coming together, and we'll have to make some tough choices. And I'm certain- And I'm certainly ready to participate in that. And I think we can get consensus among our residents and move forward in a way that's equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next question. "One of the most difficult tasks that this next city council will have to face is complying with the state's mandate under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, to provide for the zoning and potential construction of 4,832 additional new homes in the city of Newport Beach. This will require an update of the city's general plan, housing element. Where in the city do you envision these units can be built?" Brad?
Great. Fun lead on this one. You know, I think some of the community outreach showed that there was sort of an area... West Newport was spoken of, the airport, areas toward Newport Coast. Those are some of the sort of broad-brush areas for this. But really, the issue is, we need to push back on the state, on this RENA number. We have really limited areas where we can put this housing, and it's due to multiple agencies that have another say in it. So it's somewhat similar to the airport issue, in that our hands are tied in several ways in developing out the city. Not even to address the fact that that kind of density is something we've been fighting against all along. So it's really brought anti-growth groups and the city council and every other resident together to find a solution here. But the key is, we need to do everything and take every tool out of the toolbox to fight this, to push back legally by all means. Thank you.
Nancy?
Next time we have one of these, I'm going to call the Public Works Department and tell them in advance, because they are tearing up my street outside the window.
We can't hear Nancy, so don't worry.
Okay, I can, so I just... I don't want to... I feel bad. So, RENA is... It's nearly impossible. They're asking for 4,800 housing units of low and very low-income homes. That translates, when you talk to developers, and what percentage of their developments can actually be built out at low or very low income. That translates to anywhere between 9,000 and 24,000 homes in Newport. It's not just 4,800. It's all the other homes that go along with that, because developers can't pencil out 100% low-income and very low-income units. It's impossible. And we haven't even talked about the impact on schools, traffic, other city services like water, trash, whatever. We have got to push back against this. Other cities are in the same boat. We are not the only city that's going to have this problem. I can't believe that the state is going to penalize every city in Southern California that's coastal city to the point where they bankrupt them. This is just something that is going to take a huge amount of effort, and we've got to be talking to other cities as well as-
Thank you. Noah?
So, I think to draw the best parallel here, we just saw what they built at the villas in Fashion Island. We built about 500 units there. So we didn't even scratch the surface for what the state is trying to get us to do. So we can continue finding these areas that we can put some new residents in, leave our villages alone, and find those opportunities of growth, but there's no way we can get to the numbers they're looking for. The goal is to find some element of compliance and a huge element of fight. And between that, we at least have a great stance. And I think Nancy was right on. We need those cities to come together with us, because there's always strength in numbers and needs. And going to Sacramento as a unit is always better than fighting by ourselves.
Thank you, Noah. Jeff?
Yes. What we have going on to address this issue is a three-pronged approach right now. And it was defined by our mayor and defined very well by our mayor. We can do nothing, do absolutely nothing. We can solve the problem, and we can encourage legislation to maybe change the direction that this is going. We are not doing nothing. We have formed a housing committee chaired by Larry Tucker that's working very hard to solve this problem. And we're working with our lobbyists to develop legislation to address this issue, to make it more realistic, to make it more achievable. So that's our approach in the city right now. That's the approach we have to take within the city right now. It's an active approach and a positive approach. And I want to see us keep going that way.
Very good. "The city is proposing now," next question, "to construct a new fire station on the Balboa Peninsula using debt financing. The city has paid for other projects in the past using debt financing, including the main library and City Hall. Do you support the use of debt financing for city capital improvement projects?" Jeff?
Yes, absolutely. Has no effect on the people that live in our city in terms of increased taxes or fees or anything. I support that as a means of financing.
Very good. And Noah?
So, I believe in debt management over anything else. I'm a business owner. You can't just keep acquiring more debt. When it comes to our public services and the fire stations, we have to replace aging stations. We have to give them the tools they can, especially when it comes to the ambulance that we love from our fire departments that are always there for us when we need them. You know, unfortunately, Jeff was the only one that didn't vote for Measure T in 2018 to give the voters the choice. And that's tough for me. As a businessman, we strive to make money, to manage debt, and to give the best experience possible, and that's what I want to bring to the council.
Thank you. Nancy?
I totally agree with Jeff. I support debt financing for essential services. There are codes and laws that require us to keep up with those, and I think that we need to do it, and debt financing is a way that does not impact the citizens in taxes. I agree.
Nancy, thank you. Brad?
Yeah, if you've been by the fire station that we're replacing, I think everybody would agree it needs to be replaced. And we have bigger vehicles, more needs. It's a crowded place. And the city has owned the property where we're thinking of putting it, the old McDonald's property, for at least three years now. So it's time to do this, and interest rates are at historic lows, and that really makes it even more compelling. But yes, it doesn't add anything on to the residents, and we can afford this. And when it comes to this sort of public safety response time, we need to do it. So I'm totally in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to move to district-specific questions. I'm going to start with District 2, Noah and Jeff. And your question is, "Over the last 15 years, there have been several attempts to plan for the construction of a hybrid West Newport Community and Senior Services Center. Do you believe there is a need for this type of facility, and how would you go about making it happen?" Start with Noah.
We're not District 2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have said District 2, and I meant, what, District 3? Right? Sorry.
No, District 2.
Jeff and I are... Yeah, exactly.
Your question is correct, related to District 2.
I got the wrong names here. It should be Brad and Nancy. I see. Thank you. I'm so sorry, Jeff and Noah. Okay, this is where I go back to Steve and say, "I get a pay increase for this one," right? Okay, so Nancy. Let me start with Brad on this one. Brad and Nancy. And Brad, you first.
Well, you know, I see, of course, what Oasis is doing for Corona del Mar, and I've always been in favor of a center in West Newport for people who live in my neighborhood, and certainly I would use it. Oasis' distance keeps me from using it, really. But this should be financed through developer fees over time. We need to bank that and make that decision, and there's a lot to it. We've got some property out there, whether it's big enough or not. You know, we originally thought when Banning Ranch might happen, we'd be able to add that into the project, and of course, that didn't happen. So I'm totally in favor of it. I'm totally in favor of doing it in a way where we basically bring together developer fees to pay for and maybe do it in sections at a time, not necessarily build it all out at once. There's different ways to do this, where we can take bites of the elephant one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Sorry about that. Nancy?
I agree that we need some facilities on this side of town. We have a... We do have a center. It's being leased out to a school, actually. And then, in addition to that, the city leases a little tiny room, and it's used for some recreational things, but it's really a little tiny two-room industrial center. It's not adequate. With any increase in population or density on this side, which we're looking at, we're going to have to look at, something, we need additional services, and I think that that is completely a legitimate program. I don't have the finance background from the Finance Department that Brad does at this point, although that is something that I'll work on that, because that's an area that I do not know how that would be best financed.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. Now, let's see if I can get this one right. We'll go to District 5, and this is Noah and Jeff, starting with Noah. So the District 5 question is, "Currently, there is a rift in the business community on Balboa Island. A new merchants' association has formed in competition to the long-existing Balboa Island Merchants Association. If you were elected as the District 5 representative, how would you go about healing this rift? Does the rift need to be healed? What are your thoughts?" Brad? I'm sorry, Noah?
I wanted to give Brad a stab at that.
You're up.
I've gone to spend a lot of time on Balboa Island these last few weeks. I meet with all of the different groups involved there. And I think that there's a communication issue going on on Balboa Island. People just don't feel heard, and that's how we have to solve this. Being a merchant myself, being in business all these years, connecting with other merchants, is so important. And Jeff lives on Balboa Island, and the rift is happening in the backyard. I want to bring these people together. The merchants especially feel their voice isn't heard from one side or the other. The point of City Council, and the point of the representative of that area, is to be the bridge between those voices. Doesn't mean we'll agree on everything, but at least we can get everyone to the table. At least we can make a more cohesive group, and that's what we're looking to, and that's the best way we're going to solve these issues.
Thank you, Noah. Jeff, your thoughts?
You know, anytime there's difficulty between organizations who have the same purpose, who have the same vision, and in this case, that's to promote business, everything should be done to try and bring the two groups together so that they're working collectively towards that same vision and towards that same mission or end result. I've certainly been trying to do that, put a lot of effort into that, held meetings with both organizations. There's a lot of work yet to do there, and I'm certainly willing to do it and will continue to do it. You know, I've lived here for 66 years. It's absolutely heartbreaking, to be honest with you, to see what's going on regarding our merchant associations, at least it is for me, having had a long history in terms of working with the Balboa Island Improvement Association and supporting the merchants' associations. I just hate seeing what's going on. And as much as I can be a part of the solution, which I'm working hard at trying to be, I will continue to do that.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Moderator here is going to throw in a quick question for you all that is of interest to the Orange County Business Council. As you know, this is a county with 3.2 million people. Newport Beach is critically important, beautiful part of our community, but there's 33 other cities in the county itself as well. And most residents of your city might not know that not only do you serve in a role at the City Council level, should you be elected, but you also have a regional leadership role to elevate Orange County's profile on a number of fronts. And there are many, many regional boards that you might be appointed to as a member of your Newport Beach City Council. One of the hardest things in Orange County is trying to get our voice heard and get our fair share of money on a regional level that affects all of us as well. So, and I'll give you a couple of hints, just as ideas. But if you were elected or re-elected to serve in the City Council, what regional board or commission would you like to be appointed to to serve, not only representing Newport Beach, but the county as a whole? And I'm thinking, these are things like vector control, transportation corridor agencies, Orange County Transportation Agency, Southern California Association of Governments. These are big regional boards that have a major impact on Orange County's economy. So I'll start and ask Noah first. Noah, what would your wish list be on a regional board you'd like to serve?
Lucy, I love the question, but my focus right now is not about the regional side. It's about Newport. And that's why I'm getting involved, not as a politician, but as a Newport Beach business owner.
Yes.
Right now, we need that focus.
Noah, you will be appointed to these regional boards, so I-
You're going to appoint me to something? I don't know if that's an appointment then, Lucy. It sounds like a mandate.
The work is there.
Mandated over that. I think it's about driving people to our coast. We have coastal side of that. That'll be my focus then.
Awesome. Thank you, Noah. Nancy? Nancy, have you thought about a regional board?
I'm interested in SCAG. I think they have a lot to do with the RENA allocations and how that's determined, and we seem to be struggling with that, and it seems to be an area where we could use a little bit of time focused on those issues.
Thank you. And Brad?
Well, I'm currently sitting on the Orange County Sanitation District Board, and that's been rewarding and, I think, very helpful for Newport as well, really regardless of who's sitting there, but we definitely need to have a representative with that incredible agency. But my interest going forward might be with the OCTA, Transportation Agency. There's just a lot going on, and the county is... You know, all of us have taken a drive-through Irvine recently and the great park, quote-unquote. We're just going to need, you know, more roads, more toll roads, the rest of it, to keep cars flowing. And I'll just add that that's not something I look forward to, is just this tremendous growth that's going on in our town and in our county, that while it's good for business in Newport, it's sometimes tough on residents. And that's one of the things on council that we are always balancing, and it's a great challenge to try to parse the pressure on our town. We're a victim of our own success when it comes to crowds, particularly in the summer. And we like to see them, but it's really something that we need to keep an eye on and try to balance it for business and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeff, regional board?
Yeah, I'm currently one of the trustees on the vector control board. I'd want to continue that. I've served for the last two years, and I feel like I'm well-oriented now. I know what it's about. I know what my responsibilities are, so I'd want to continue that. I also serve as an alternate on the regional water board. And as far as any future responsibilities, this is not a board, but I'm very interested in getting more involved in OCCOC as an organization. Okay?
Thank you. Very good. Well, now it is time for our closing statements. And this again is your opportunity to wrap up the comments that maybe you needed to make and didn't quite get in. And so we'll begin with... Let me remind you again, this is our one-minute closing statement, so keep an eye on Robin, and we'll begin with you, Jeff. One-minute closing statement.
All right. I'm running for reelection for the following reasons. I want to see our work related to water quality in our harbor through to completion. I want to see our work related to John Wayne Airport especially through to completion. I want to provide stability and consistency in these unprecedented times. And I want to continue to be the voice of reason, to exercise transparency, and to insist on keeping the people of Newport Beach really well-informed on all issues related to the governance of our city. I ask you to give me that opportunity- I ask you to give me that opportunity to continue to represent you when voting this coming November. And thank you, Steve, and thank you, Lucy, for this opportunity. It's been a great hour.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Noah?
So I'm asking for your vote this November because I'm not looking to have anything through to completion. I'm looking to constantly improve, just like in any business. I'm looking to be the business advocate for the council. I'm not a politician. I'm not an attorney. I haven't sat on the political spectrum for this long, so I bring a fresh and new idea to this council, something that shows that we can improve by maintaining everything we are. While we can look towards our villages and say, these are what we treasure, we can look towards our business districts and saying, this is where we're going to gain our strength. This is not business as usual. This is a new era that we're entering, and if we go about it in the same old ways, we are not going to get the goals we're looking for. We need to make some great changes, and I hope you vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Nancy?
Thank you. Boy, I've changed. Brad's picture's up. I'm not Brad. Thanks. I thank you very much for sharing your, letting me share the thoughts, my thoughts with you today. I can tell you that if I'm elected, I will be informed, and if I don't know the answers, I'll ask a lot of questions. I'll continue to be involved in all of the committees that I have been involved in. I will, you'll find that I don't speak unless I have something constructive to add to the conversation, and if I am speaking, I'm usually asking questions. I won't vote on an issue unless I understand the facts and have an informed and balanced opinion, and that opinion will be based on what I believe is the best interest of the community that calls itself Newport Beach. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Nancy. And Brad?
Thank you. Unlike so many cities in this country, Newport Beach is in a strong financial position. We're getting through this pandemic with minimal loss of services to residents and visitors. Strong revenues and strong fiscal management have made this possible. We are fortunate that beginning more than a century ago, generations of residents and civic leaders carefully cultivated an abundance of natural beauty into one of the world's most desirable coastal cities. To prepare for our current fiscal year, your council voted to reduce the 2021 budget by approximately $30 million. Looking forward toward an uncertain economic future, our fiscal decisions may become more difficult. Experienced, balanced, and principled leadership is required to meet our near-term challenges. I ask for your vote. And Steve, Lucy, thank you very much, and to all those watching, thank you for your participation.
Well, thank you all candidates. It was a delight to be your moderator, and I think the city of Newport Beach has a great choice ahead of them in the fall. And again, my pleasure to join you all today, and I look forward to following, following you all on the campaign trail. Turn it back to our fearless leader, Steve Rosansky.
Thank you, Lucy. Everybody can see why you get the big bucks because you can fly. I'll take credit for your, for that little mistake, for doing things at the last minute. But I do want to thank you for, once again, hosting and moderating our candidate forum. I want to thank all the candidates for participating. It was a very interesting discussion, and there were a lot of commonalities, but also a few differences are apparent. And so, you know, it'll be for the next 75 days or so, I think, for the candidates to make their points. We're the first of probably half a dozen or a dozen, I don't know how many forums are going to happen this year with, you know, the pandemic, you know, keeping us from meeting in person, but I'm sure there'll be other opportunities for them to express their ideas on the various issues that affect Newport Beach residents and especially Newport Beach businesses, which is obviously near and dear to the heart of the chamber. We're happy to have posted this. I also want to thank my sister, Robin Grant, who served as our timer.
Hey, Robin.
And we'll have to get rid of that bell. The bells do not work. But thank you all. Have a great rest of your week, and I look forward to seeing you all on the campaign trail. And certainly, if there's anything that we can do for anybody out in the audience, Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce stands ready, willing, and able to help you, as I'm sure the Orange County Business Council, through Lucy's efforts. And you can find us at wwwnewportbeach.com. If you're not a member of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, we invite you to partner with us and join. And as you can see over my left shoulder, save our economy and wear a mask. Thank you all.
Mask up, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.